I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. And the first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox. Councilmember Page. Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to excuse the two council members that are absent.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number five is the approval of the minutes for the June 10th work session, June 10th regular meeting, June 10th closed session, and June 20th retreat minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is item number six, which is the first of two public comments. Do we have someone, anyone signed up?
Yes, we have Maplewood resident Shay Marks.
Okay. Please come to podium and try and keep your remarks to less than three minutes.
Yes, my concern comes from a source within Slaven Properties, actually, one of their property managers. I wish to keep their identity anonymous at this time to ensure that they do not lose their job over leaking this information. Slaven Properties supposedly has long-term plans to buy up every single rental property in Maplewood to have a monopoly over the renting class here. And I am afraid that might undermine your mission with affordable housing and a diverse community. I am afraid that they might try to price out people who would vote for candidates that would go against their personal interests. In addition to that, they have been mistreating their workers even to the point where my property manager initially quit about a week or two ago. And I have been told that a lot of the things that I have suggested would be against state law. However, maybe an antitrust case might work. But I am not sure. I'll leave that up to you.
Okay, thank you. You know, with regards to landlord relations here in Maplewood, you know, if there's complaints, we do have housing inspections once a year and we do have a method to file complaints. And as we spoke just previously, knowing most of the property owners in Maplewood, I don't think that there's a viable chance of Mr. Slaven monopolizing the Maplewood housing market. And so, but you know, as things develop, let us know, you know, if you have any further concerns. Is there anyone else on the public comment?
There is no one signed up at this time.
Okay, keep in mind that there's always a second opportunity at the end of the meeting for expressing public comments. Item number seven are announcements. Do we have any announcements?
We do have announcements. Friday night is Let Them Eat Art. We should all go to it. It's a fantastic event. Art, food, performances. What's not to like?
Additionally, I just want to make note of the upcoming Comprehensive Plan Open House occurring on July 15th. And time, four? Four. It's at four.
Okay, any other announcements? Okay, moving on then. Item number eight are presentations. And Jason, would you like to join us up here? This is always the most fun that I have as mayor. But I'd like to read the resolution so we can keep you up here and embarrass you for a while. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri honoring and commending Public Works Superintendent Jason Watkins for 25 years of full-time service with the City of Maplewood. Whereas Jason Watkins began his dedicated service to the City of Maplewood at the age of 15 as a seasonal worker for the Parks and Recreation Department from May 1994 to December 1999 and began his full-time career as Maintenance Worker One on April 12, 2000. And whereas through his exceptional work ethic and demonstrated capabilities, he advanced to Maintenance Worker Number Two in 2015 and was subsequently appointed interim Public Works Superintendent in 2021 before being promoted to Public Works Superintendent. And whereas in 2021, he was honored as the Mid-County Chamber Citizen of the Year for his service to the community. And whereas as Public Works Superintendent, he skillfully oversees a team of nine full-time employees and is noted for his halfability, his genuine care for others, and supportive leadership style that has fostered a positive work environment. And whereas throughout his years of service, he has consistently demonstrated dedication to maintaining and improving the city's infrastructure and public facilities. And his loyal service has significantly contributed to the operational success of the Public Works Department and the overall well-being of the Maplewood community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council in the City of Maplewood as follows. The mayor and city council on behalf of all of our citizens do hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Public Works Superintendent Jason Watkins for his distinguished service to the community and commend him for the exceptional manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities for the last 25 years. And be it further resolved that the mayor and city council extend to Jason Watkins best wishes for continued success in his future years of service with the City of Maplewood. And would you like to acknowledge any?
Thank you very much.
Anyone in the crowd?
My family, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
And while I'm up here, let's see, Chief Nyber. Right. Good timing, right? I'm going to read your resolution. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri honoring and commending Police Chief Matthew Nyber for 20 years of service with the City of Maplewood. Whereas Matthew Nyber began his career with the City of Maplewood as a police officer on June 24, 2005. After previously serving the community from 2000 to 2002 and through his unwavering commitment to excellence has advanced through the ranks serving as Sergeant beginning in 2007 and Lieutenant beginning in 2016. And whereas his exceptional performance and distinguished service led to his appointment as Acting Police Chief of Police in 2021 and subsequent promotion to Chief of Police in 2022. Whereas as Chief of Police, he has skillfully led a department of 33 full-time officers and two civilian employees demonstrating outstanding leadership and a vision in law enforcement operations. And whereas he has earned significant commendations from other agencies for his outstanding work with the Major Case Squad of Greater St. Louis, bringing honor to the City of Maplewood. And whereas his commitment to innovation and modernization has resulted in numerous departmental improvements, including the implementation of new technologies and enhanced community and training programs that have strengthened public safety services. And whereas Chief Nyber has established himself as a respected leader in the regional law enforcement community fostering strong relationships and community stakeholders and advancing the department's mission of public safety and community engagement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri as follows. The mayor and city council on behalf of all of our citizens do hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Police Chief Matthew Nyber for his distinguished service to the community and commend him for the exceptional manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities for the last 20 years. And be it further resolved that the mayor and city council extend to Matthew Nyber best wishes for continued success in his future years of service with the City of Maplewood. Fortunately, those are the most words I'm going to be speaking tonight. The, we wanted also to honor and commend Major John LeClaire for 20 years of service, but he's not available tonight. So I assume we'll be presenting that at a subsequent meeting. Item number D is Human Services Commission update by Bailey Sheckman, Chair of the Commission.
I was going to introduce myself to take up some time, but you did it already. This is the first time I've ever done one of these things, so. Here we go. Thank you for letting me present to you what the Human Service Commission has been up to over the last year. I'll try to make this quick. Okay, there we go. So we have basically five points. We're going to go over where we started as a commission last year, what we learned over the last year, our response to what we learned, and then how we're setting priorities for the 2025, 2026 year and where that has led us to right now. So. Just a quick refresher about where we started. I think it's important to go back to our purpose. It is to advise the city council in all matters regarding to planning, contracting for human service programs to adequately meet the needs of the citizens of the city of Maplewood, especially low and moderate income. And I put a quote there from our group, which is, "Do we really understand what Maplewood citizens need?" So as you're aware, last year, our initiative was Aging in Place. We were trying to understand better what our Maplewood citizens aged 65 and above need to be able to stay here and continue letting Maplewood be their home. This is a fun, beautiful little word bubble that we made based on the results of our survey. You'll find that a lot of the words there kind of call back to the results of the 2021 survey that you guys did. Obviously, taxes and housing and services are things that are talked about a lot amongst our elder community. I'm just going to go over a few details before I move on from this slide. Three of the biggest things that we learned from our survey is that information sharing needs improving. We have a lot of amenities on the website, but 60% of surveys that we received indicated that they were not aware of any city or local programs or resources for seniors. And that is 60% of 5% of the total number of elders living in Maplewood. So this leads me to wonder how effectively Maplewood is engaging with residents. Whether it's sharing or gathering information, Maplewood's 2021 survey and the Aging in Place survey both suggest that overall community engagement with the city is low. The second thing we learned is that isolation is a problem. Again, we received 40 surveys total and we have just above 720 residents based on the 2020 census over the age of 65. So if we're going to responsibly and adequately recommend programs or services to city council, I would like to bring a little bit larger of a representation to you. And then the three most common complaints, and these kind of go together. So it's three within the third thing we learned, which is that accessibility, affordability, and community programs are big issues for our elder citizens. So. I'm going to move to the next slide. So what was our response to this information? Well, the information piece was the easiest thing to solve because we have a lot of programs and amenities here in Maplewood and we think that it's a quick thing to do to address getting that information out to citizens. So here's some things that we did. We now have a 350-word space page in the Maple Leaf issue. And we're going to attempt to highlight and spotlight local resources and city programs. We're also partnering with the city to share more information and resources through the city's Facebook page to try and gauge citizens through social media. And we have been collecting resources to share out over a period of time. And then the third thing that we've done in order to increase information sharing is we've partnered with the community more. As you're aware, when we came to for the budget, we asked for a portion to go to a block leader recruitment party, which we are hosting July 19th, thanks to your approval. I'm personally really, really excited about this initiative and I appreciate you guys helping us accomplish this goal because when we met with block leaders, we invited them to the Human Service Commission meetings and we invited them to give us some feedback. And what we found was that we have really incredible Maplewood block leaders, people who have the email or number to everyone that they live next to. They're hosting regular events outside of the National Night Out. These people are leaders and they can connect their neighbors to information. So thank you for helping us accomplish that goal as well. Lastly, we did establish a liaison partnership with the St. Louis County Department of Human Services. They have a ton of wonderful resources and services. Sharing their information and them helping us share our information can only help us kind of get that out more. We also got connected to the St. Louis County Continuum of Care and we're connecting more to local leaders and nonprofits in order to share information throughout in multiple places. Okay. So for the 2025 priorities, we're examining what we learned from 2024, which again is that engagement from our citizens is not where we would like it to be. And in order to address engagement more thoroughly, we've divided them into two categories, the isolation piece and the accessibility piece. And so this is kind of how we decided to move forward this year. So the goals for our engagement focusing on isolation, we're hoping that through the increase of block leaders and through the continued feedback we receive with block leaders, we'll notice an increase in engagement from neighbors and their access to city information. We've also partnered with community leaders. We meet once a month at Artist First, where they host a meeting with community leaders, church leaders, school leaders. And we attempt to share and distribute information in one spot. So again, it's shared widely in many spaces throughout Maplewood. I know we're doing a lot of surveys, but we're going to do it again. We're looking at other cities and how they have accomplished surveys when they've gotten a higher percent of citizen engagement. And we're going to try something new. Last year, we surveyed at the Summer Concert Series. We surveyed at the Senior Resource Fair. And we surveyed in a handful of local churches. And there were a surprisingly low amount of Maplewood elders in these spaces, which reinforces the amount that didn't seem to be aware of community resources and events. So this year, we're putting together a new survey, which we'll bring to you, but we're going to attempt to do it more in the community. So in places like grocery stores, at the food pantries, and outside of apartment buildings. An attempt to try to meet our undersurveyed residents where they're at. And then the sharing piece just kind of repeats back into why we're engaged in the community is that we have the ability to share information in many ways, in many places, with the attempt to meet many needs. And so then moving forward to accessibility, and then we're totally done with this. So again, speaking of the surveys, we're looking at what other cities have done with surveys. We're looking back at our 2021 survey and our Aging in Place survey. And we're trying to tweak our approach so that it is with those that we want to hear from in mind. And hopefully, when we come to you with that survey plan, we'll have a lot of really interesting findings to tell you about that. And then for accessibility, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, we'll also be collecting data from the city's ongoing ADA study. Obviously, there's a whole lot of data to be had between the two surveys I mentioned and that study as it takes place. So trying to stay in line with the city's agenda is also our agenda for attempting to address the accessibility in Maplewood. And then hopefully, we'll also be able to bring back measurable data showing that the increase in how and where we share information is making these amenities more accessible to residents and ideally, we'll see an uptick in their use. So, yeah. That is, that is what we've been up to. That is a year for the Maplewood Human Service Commission. That is my email. Does anybody have any questions?
In the fall at the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, if you want to have a presence there, we usually have a few of our senior citizens in attendance there. And also, after the meeting, if you're still here and members of the commission, I have an update that you might be interested in.
Yeah, awesome.
Just out of curiosity, if you happen to know, with the survey responses that you did get at the various places at which you surveyed residents, did you feel like there was a pretty even representation of those residents from each of the wards? Or that any of the wards in particular had a heavier presence in the survey?
That is a great question, and I don't think we have officially tried to chart that data. But that would be interesting to look at.
Just curious.
Do you have any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bailey.
And the next item, moving on to unfinished business, is Bill 6283, our final reading authorizing the city manager execute documents to grant an easement to Maplewood Enterprises LLC and STL Multi Partners One LLC to allow a parking lot access drive aisle.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
And Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Okay, Bill 6283 is approved as ordinance 6077.
Thank you. Under New Business, Bill 6283, is that correct, that bill number?
It is not. It should be 62... Excuse me, it should be 6284.
Okay, thank you. Bill 6284, re-adopting, establishing, and making public a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. As far as discussion, this is something that's required, I believe. Is it by the state?
Yes, that's correct.
And obviously, it's something that we need to adhere to anyway. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, Bill 6284, re-adopting, establishing, and making public a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The third and final reading will be held at our next city council meeting. Moving on to item 11, Council and Staff Reports. Mayor's report is, there are several of us that attended the Control Corps Training Facility groundbreaking today. And the, I think everything that the city manager said in her speech, I would like for her to repeat it, but nonetheless, the idea is that the cooperation with the other fire departments is essential to our cooperation, essential to our educational growth, and hopefully, it'll help save some lives. So they're going to get started on that. At least they started this morning with a couple of shovelfuls of dirt. So is there a Ward One report?
No, I just wanted to, since we do have a few members of the Human Services Commission, encourage- encourage you guys, if you don't mind, in whatever way you can reach out to any of your constituents that are regularly in contact with you to let them know about, probably, this is the final opportunity for people to come to a comprehensive plan, open house, and give feedback. The, this is the third, or even, yeah, the third round of, of comment. And as I'm sure you guys know, everyone else here, there seems to be a lot of interest, especially since the recent increase in taxes in having discussions about, about what the future plan is, what the future city plan is, potential changes to zoning ordinances. And so, I think it's really, really important that anybody who has any input takes the opportunity to show up and speak with those that are here. And I would encourage our individual from Public Comment, if you want to come, that's usually a really great opportunity to give input as well about affordable housing and what the future of Maplewood is going to look like. So, if you have any further comments as well, that would be a great time to come. That is, no, so on July 15th at 4 o'clock, there's going to be an open house here where you'll have the opportunity to speak with members of the Plan and Zoning Commission as well as members of the, the.
July 15th, who's that? It's next Monday, right?
15th.
It's the next Tuesday.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so it's, it's just a good opportunity to give feedback. And if you know anybody else who has similar, strong opinions about the future of Maplewood, it'd be a great opportunity to come. So, that's all I have.
We don't have a representative from Ward Two, but I just wanted to express our condolences to chastity on the passing of her father-in-law. The visitation is tomorrow night at J.B. Smith Funeral Home. So, if you knew John, feel free to come by and, and visit. Ward Three report.
Nothing for me.
Nothing here.
City Attorney's report.
No report. I just look forward to working with you all.
Yeah, this, this is the city attorney's first meeting with us, so.
You got a nice, easy one, so.
Yeah. And the next item is the city manager's report.
Mine will be a little bit longer than that one. Just a few quick items. As you'll see from my memo, I am requesting a work session on August 12th specifically to discuss city investments in the properties that we own down in Ward Two around the intersections of Manchester, Yale, Lindover, and Bellevue. This is obviously an item that we've discussed in the past based on some suggestions we've had from members of the community in the neighborhood as well as some concerns that have been expressed to us by property owners, both current and incoming. Staff would like to propose a little bit more focus and investment in some of these areas, which may include improvements to the Yale Green space, more focused attention on solutions for dealing with loitering at the Yale Bus Stop, maybe some discussion around the location of our Maplewood pantry in that area. So, I wanted to signal that, that we'll be discussing it with some specific proposals from staff. We'll be doing some meetings in the community before that time to get some feedback from those who are most directly impacted. And I would encourage our Human Services Commission members to participate as well, since this is a topic that we've discussed at the commission level. I am pleased to share with you the first annual report from our police department, which was in your packet this week. We are releasing that at this time of the year for the first outing in future. That annual report will be shared with you at the end of January for the preceding calendar year. This is a chock full of information, not only about the activities of our police department and our crime statistics, but also gives you a lot of information about who serves on our police force, gives you pictures and names and bios for command staff and leadership in an attempt to make our folks a little bit more accessible to the community and, and make their work also more accessible to our residents.
Is that on our website already?
It is on our website already. And we did a recent social media post just pointing people to the wealth of information and resources that is available in the police department area of the website.
Seriously, I mean, it's fantastic, so.
I've also provided just a quick update on our progress regarding the rental registry, which staff has been working on diligently. I got an inquiry from Councilmember Homa about when we might bring some proposed legislation forward. I've asked him to allow us to go through the technical aspects of the implementation of that before we, we move forward. Those of you who know business owners will know that we successfully launched the user portal for our business license renewals, which was the milestone we wanted to pass before we implemented a user portal for the rental registry. So, so far, mostly so good. A couple of hiccups, but it's, it's been functioning fairly well. And then finally, I've provided some basic updates on what we understand about the timeline regarding Greenwood Reconstruction and GRG Trail Installation, as well as the replacement of the Greenwood Bridge over Big Bend. The mayor had some questions that he sent via email to us after we put the packet together. And I just wanted to clarify, the county has let us know that they are bidding for the replacement of both bridges, both the Greenwood Avenue Bridge and the Pacific Avenue Bridge. So, those are the overpasses that flank the railroad bridge. That being said, depending on how the bids come back, they're dedicated to replacing the Greenwood Bridge. They will replace the Pacific Avenue Bridge if the bids come in favorably and they have the funds to do so. You'll recall that in 2022, the county proposed removing that bridge. The city, with our county councilwoman, pushed back on that and convinced them that they needed to preserve the bridge. However, they have let us know that they will not invest in further repairs on that bridge outside of this particular project. So, if the bids do not come back favorable and they cannot afford to replace it, the bridge will remain until it reaches the end of its functional life, at which point, at this time, the county has let us know they will decommission the Pacific Avenue Bridge. We have no timeline on that. We are hopeful that the bidding process will allow them to replace it. But they have told us they're prioritizing Greenwood as it's used quite a bit more than Pacific. Questions about that? And as we move through our project timelines and our own bidding process, we'll be pushing out more information to the community so that they can be aware of closures along Greenwood, which will be disruptive. But we're planning to do that in two phases on either side of Sutton so that folks can still get home in a circuitous way and so that our public safety folks have access.
I'm looking forward to the work being done. The biggest disappointment is that we're not able to, because of the railroad bridge, we're not able to widen the roadway at all to include a sidewalk. That's been a pinch point for people on, on foot. And also, I've voiced it before, but the Great Rivers Greenway, in my opinion, should have gone across the Greenwood Bridge and eliminated going through the neighborhoods. And as a cyclist myself, I think it would be much safer. The project's too far along. The St. Louis County did not announce that they were going to do this work until plans had already been drawn up for, for the route. And I don't know if there's a, an option to appeal that and revise the drawings, but I still think that that, that would have been a much better way to go.
Mayor, if I can interject, the county did clarify that one of the principal barriers to having the trail come along Greenwood is the, the road that goes down past the Foundry and their, their inability to widen that road to make it sufficient to accommodate the trail and traffic simultaneously without cutting into the, the private property.
Having taken that particular route numerous times and having worked with O'Hare Foundry in the past, I personally don't see that as a major impediment. I still think it's a much safer route, but, and the fact that Great Rivers Greenway didn't talk to the owner until, you know, several months after I asked them to. Anyway, it's literally water under the bridge, I guess. Is there a, a need for a closed session tonight?
I have one question, sorry, about the Greenwood Avenue. Do we have traffic data that shows that Greenwood is used more than Pacific?
That the Greenwood Avenue Bridge is?
Yeah.
Yeah, the county did show that data in 2022, and I can, I can.
No, I'm just curious. It's anecdotal, but it feels like the reverse to me, living over there. And I'm very ignorant on this topic. Greenwood is Maplewood City Street, and so is Pacific. But the bridge is, because they're over Big Bend, fall to the county?
Correct.
Okay. So, if they decide that the bid for Pacific, the Pacific Bridge is not favorable, which I think is likely in this, in this economic environment, and they do not replace it or move forward, then that thoroughfare just becomes dilapidated until the point where it falls apart and it's unsafe, it's not usable? Like, do we do anything to that, or can we? Or do we just let that process play out?
The county owns the bridge. That being said, if they do not plan to repair it or replace it, I think we have cause to begin a discussion with them should, should council wish to preserve that infrastructure.
Thank you.
Any other comments before I entertain a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. No one signed up for the second public comment, is that correct?
Oh. I was going to make a suggestion based on what you said about the bridge.
Hold on one second. Do we have anyone signed up?
We don't have anyone else signed up at the moment.
Quickly.
I would actually suggest, instead of relying on a bid, to try and gather the community together. There's sure to be enough, like, fabricators and people who are familiar with chemistry enough to help fix the bridge, like a volunteer group.
We don't own it. We can't touch it, St. Louis County.
That would be up to the county to do that.
Then may I suggest talking to the county about that?
We have.
And we first need to see what the, the bids come back. And if, if the bids fall within their parameters, then it's, it'll be a moot point.
True. Thank you for hearing me out.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.